City Council is called to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, City Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor McClellan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Present.
Councilmember Radnor?
I am present.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
And Councilmember Whitehead?
We have a quorum, thank you. I would like you to add a note to the approval of the agenda, adding seven B, recognition of Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Burns. Oh. So, um, uh, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Uh, consent agenda. I would like to remove for discussion items H and I. Is there anyone else removing an item? No? The following items are presented for council approval without discussion as a single agenda item. Any council member can discuss any item and have it dropped from the blanket motion, considered separately. A, regular city council meeting minutes for December sixteenth, 2024. B, payment of invoices from OHM advisors for engineering consulting services for the total amount of five thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. C, request authorization to bid the 2025 water main replacement project, M seven sixty-nine. D, approval of pay application number one for the 2024 sewer and catch basin cleaning and TV inspection project, M seven seven four, in the amount of seventy-two thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and eight cents. E, request authorization to bid the 2025 Northfield reconstruction project, M seven seventy. F, public safety activity summary report for November 2024. G, request authorization to bid the eleven mile parking lot replacement project, M six nine four. And down to J, new and renewal licenses, January sixth, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Let's look at item H, resolution to authorize the use of credit cards for city business and adopt the new credit card policy. Is there a motion? In a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, I would like, um, city manager to explain why suddenly we're using credit cards when we hadn't been before and what, uh, what are the upsides and downsides of, um, using the credit cards?
Excuse me, uh, city manager, before you proceed with that, I recall maybe, uh, two, three years ago, we had updated our credit card policy to put certain safeguards in place. So this is in addition, this is a change to that.
Mayor Pro Tem, that is correct, but although, let me add a caveat to that. So we do have credit cards currently. So we have one credit card. And that's been primarily because that's the only one that I wanted us to have, for safety purposes, obviously. What you're referring to is the major overhaul that we put in place regarding our purchasing policy. And so nothing included in the request tonight has anything to do with changes to our purchasing policy. This is simply to authorize that the city formally adopt an expansion of our credit card uses. And this is primarily because most of the purchases that the city does at this point in time are online. And it's become prohibitive to our business operation not to have, you know, a handful of credit cards. And so one of the things that the credit card through our bank, obviously Huntington Bank, allows us to do, uh, the new policy will allow us to put very specific controls on purchasing. So, for example, and I'm gonna pick on part Public Works here, um, but Public Works employees, and there'll be one card assigned to Public Works, let's say.
Of the Works Department?
Public Works Department. So a Public Works and Department employee, and in this case, it would be Dave DeCoster, here, and would not be able to go out and purchase, you know, anything that's not related to that particular function. And the spending limitations within the credit card that would be established as part of the controls would assimilate our purchasing policy, but any other more stringent policies won't put in place, um, to further, uh, uh, restrict purchasing on that card. But again, so much of Public Works purchasing happens online for parts, for repairs, or whatever it may be, that not having this in place now and having just the one card that sits under my authority is really putting a damper on our ability to do business.
Okay.
Um, and that was really in going way back now, and you, you remember, you were in office, um, Mayor Pro Tem, when this was going on, but we had, in preparation for our new purchasing policy, and of course, then our, now our credit card policy, we had, um, greater restrictions on our purchasing because we wanted to try to safeguard against fraud and attempts at fraud. And we had some of those in the past.
Correct.
Um, almost every municipality has to some degree. So it wouldn't change any of that, um, but, um, up until now, I, I was not willing to move forward, um, because I wasn't comfortable, um, being very, very conservative with credit cards going out. And it'll just be a limited amount, you know, I could assume, you know, three or four of them citywide.
So it would go to the director only? That would be the one employee?
It would, it, it, in this case, yes, and it would still follow the same purchasing guidelines. So the director is authorized to a certain amount to purchase, the city manager is authorized to a certain amount, anything over that has to go back to city council, just like we do for any other purchase now, whether it's through a credit card or not, so.
Okay.
And how is it safer now than it had been?
Well, like I said, just the greater restrictions on spending. So Public Works couldn't go out and buy, you know, uh, you know, ammunition for public safety. It's just, there's, there's.
Or a seventy thousand dollar card.
Or, right. Um, probably a bad example, but, um, they couldn't put a pizza party on the, the city credit card, for example, stuff like that. So, so the spending on the items they're purchasing is limited, and then again, the amounts are limited and prohibited to just, restricted to just what is in the policy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. So we have a motion and we have, um, a second. Yes?
I'm sorry, could I just add one more thing? And I know this might be a question too. As far as budget implications, this has no budget implications beyond what is currently budgeted. Actually, none of that would change as part of this either. Um, it just changes the way that we purchase, um, the same things that we purchase normally, so.
Okay, sounds good. So, um, we are ready for a vote on, uh, adopting the credit card policy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. That brings us to I, payment request from Newman Smith Architecture for Architectural Services on the Event Hub, which we have discussed, and on the municipal services move, which I am less, uh, familiar with. Uh, so first, let's get a, uh, motion in a second.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And then city manager Tungate, would you explain, um, the municipal services issue?
Sure.
City council line?
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm gonna have, uh, um, Director, Deputy City Manager DeCoster, um, go into more detail on this, but let me set this up. So part of, as, as we know, um, technical and planning, which is now municipal services, their offices are based in our community center, which we know is being demolished for a new community center per our residents' vote. So this is in an effort to try to find a home for them, um, and do it as affordably as possible. So what we were looking at as part of this contract, and this was also in an effort to save money on, um, duplicative services, um, not only for our Event Hub, but also for the possibility that they would move over into the old city hall space, which quite a bit of that area where public safety used to be is now, um, vacant. So this is the area from where, um, the district court sits to the current public safety. There's about, I don't know, Dave, how many square feet of that?
Probably six thousand.
Six thou- six thousand? Give or take? So that space is unused, and part of this was to look at the possibility of locating them into that space. And Dave, I don't know if you wanna elaborate a little bit more on that, but.
Yeah, sure, thank you. Uh, first, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and City Manager Tungate. Um, the city manager did explain it. We did, originally when we hired Newman Smith back in January of 2024, we had this as part of their contract. The Event Hub design and construction plans was the main portion of the contract. However, this municipal services move was kind of a secondary piece of it. We started the project, Eric had led a team to investigate using that as municipal services. Um, shortly after starting, we came to the conclusion that it may be a little bit more of an investment than we initially thought it may be. Uh, there's some logistical issues over there, um, with some of the HVAC, electrical, mechanical components. So a couple of months ago, we stopped that work. Uh, we didn't wanna throw good money after bad, so we stopped that work in order to investigate a little bit further, kinda see where we're gonna go with the entire scope of the city complex here with regards to the, uh, new recreation center, the demo with the current facility. And we may pick it up again, um, but at this point, we've kinda put pause on that project to make sure we're spending the money wisely. So you can see, we haven't paid anything on that portion of the project for probably five months, six months. Uh, we did pay a small portion, we've only paid about eighteen percent of that smaller portion of the contract. Like I said, since we put a pause on that, probably mid two thousand twenty-four, we have not been paying for it.
And, and moving them to this building, there's not enough room in this building?
No, there's not. And Mayor, there, also, if, if you'll recall, when we built this building, um, there was going to be a twenty thou- was it twenty thousand or twenty feet extra?
Right.
On the western side of the building, that was removed as part of the cost-cutting measures during the time. Well, that was where technical and planning, municipal services was gonna go. So now, we have no home for them. And so again, as we mentioned, you know, looking at the most affordable ways to do this, it's, it's a little awkward having them, you know, baked in between public safety and the court over here, just the parking and other issues associated with that. But as Dave said, we may have to revisit that because we may have no other option, uh, since, you know, quite, quite a chunk of our current community center is going to be demolished for the, um, new community center.
And, uh, putting them in the old community center was something you also looked at?
We, we will be looking at that, we have talked about that, but one of the issues that I think is gonna come back up, and this is after we will come to this conclusion, I think, after we study this too, but what we're gonna find is that some of the HVAC and other issues associated with the current community center space are the same ones we deal with over here, so.
It was built the same?
Built at the same time, have the same issues, you know, there's some structural issues, mostly mechanical though, and the cost for some of this stuff. Now, none of these costs are going to exceed building new, that's for sure. But we are going to have to find a home for municipal services.
Got it. Any questions? Thank you. So this is, um, we're voting to okay the payment request. Uh, we've discussed it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to recognition of visiting elected officials.
You missed J.
What's that?
You missed J.
Oh, what's that? H and I, we got? Yeah, we did that one.
Oh.
We, we, we okayed J along with, uh, A through G.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Seeing none, we are at special recognition and presentations. The first is to honor the retirement of General Foreman Ray Krajewski. Uh, Dave DeCoster, uh, deputy city manager, would you?
I'm actually gonna do that first, and then I turn it over to.
Got it. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So just a reminder, as you know, for every employee, uh, who retires from the city of Oak Park, we do this, um, recognition. I think it's very, very important. Um, Ray has been an employee here for, um, twenty-five plus years in our Department of Public Works. The mayor, council, and administration of the city of Oak Park, Michigan, in testament and tribute to his distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the city of Oak Park and its residents, wish to express their sincere appreciation to Ray Krajewski. You have served as a pillar of integrity in this organization and have helped to set the city's high standard of excellence. You have served as a source of guidance, support, and leadership for your colleagues, and it is those qualities that will leave a lasting imprint on the city of Oak Park. Your credit, your dedicated spirit, wealth of knowledge, and overall dedication to the city of Oak Park will be, will be sorely missed. Signed, Marion McClellan, Mayor, Eric Tungate, City Manager. Ray, I just wanna say, before I turn it over to Dave, I know he's not here tonight, but hopefully he's watching, thank you for your service, sir. You will be greatly missed. So much appreciated. Dave?
Thank you again, and good evening. I echo everything that City Manager Tungate has mentioned here tonight, uh, like he had said, Ray is a twenty-five-plus-year employee, uh, all with the Department of Public Works. He has served in a variety of roles. He has done everything that our public service workers do, whether or not be serving and fixing our water system, or plowing the streets at night for our residents. Uh, he's also been our wood shop lead, the foreman of our Streets Division, our Building and Maintenance Division, our Parks and Forestry Division, or as recently, our Special Projects Division. So, uh, I just wanna wish Ray well. His last day is next Monday, so if anybody sees him around, um, please wish him good luck. And again, sorry I couldn't be here tonight, but we wish him all the best in his retirement.
Thank you. Um, item seven B, um, uh, city, um, Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Burns, um, is retiring for health reasons, and of, of all the people I've served with, she is dependable and, um, hardworking, and just a credit to the whole, um, public service with the stress on the word "service." She has been a credit to our council, and she will be sorely missed, and we hope when she's feeling better, she'll be back up here. And, and, um, Mayor Pro Tem would like to say a few words.
This was a very, very hard decision for me to come to. Anyone who knows me lo- knows how much I love the work that I do for the residents in the community, for the city of Oak Park. I can't believe that the time has passed, and it's almost been twelve years since I was initially elected to the city council. Since that time, I've served with some great people, um, including my current city council. We're more like a family than, uh, a, a commu- we're a community family. Um, the mayor, who I also call my friend, is a relationship that i- is a bonus to this position. This gentleman sitting next to me, we've always had a special arrangement. We call each other brother and sister. And, uh, Julie came to see me in the hospital several times. They asked me questions that I don't even think about to ask the doctors, 'cause, you know, I'm just so overwhelmed, but when I talk to these two, I'm off the phone and asking all these questions and getting this additional information, so they are just so helpful. Um, the whole entire staff, I've enjoyed working with you, our legal counsel, um, everything. I just am at a loss for words, but I was blessed to been given this opportunity to, uh, work with the residents in the community of Oak Park. And Lord willing, by my health gets better, I will rerun and you guys will see me back up here for another twelve, thirteen years.
Thank you.
Which one of us are you gonna run against?
That's cute. So we have a proclamation here honoring council member and Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Burns. Whereas Carolyn Burns has been an engaged resident of the city of Oak Park for the last twenty-five years, and whereas she has diligently served as a member of city council since two thousand thirteen, and held the re- the role of Mayor Pro Tem for three terms, and whereas she also served as a member of numerous boards and committees, including the Beautification Advisory Commission, Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, Public Safety Retirement System Board, Brownfield Commission, Corridor Improvement Authority Board, Oak Park Library Board, Recycling and Environmental Conservation Commission, Planning Commission, and Parks and Recreation Commission. And whereas she was instrumental in the formation of the Oak Park Juneteenth Committee alongside Councilmember Whitehead. And whereas, in addition to her remarkable service to the city of Oak Park, Carolyn Burns served on the State of Michigan Department of Corrections parole board, and facilitated public hearings with the state attorney general's office. And whereas, she was a longtime member of the Liberty Temple Baptist Church, dedicated family member, wonderful employee, community member, and true public servant, with the emphasis on servant. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Marion McClellan, Mayor of the city of Oak Park, Michigan, on behalf of the Oak Park City Council and all of our residents, by proclamation, to hereby express appreciation for and congratulations to Carolyn Burns for her years of dedicated service to the city of Oak Park and its residents. In testimony whereof, I have signed my name officially and caused the seal of the city of Oak Park, Michigan, to be affixed the sixth day of January, two thousand twenty-five. Marion McClellan, Mayor. Um, and if we can come down and get a photo up.
It'd probably be easier if we do it up here.
Up here.
So let's do it up here. Sounds good. What a great idea. There we go. Look at you up there, you're just a chicken.
He wants us to scoot over. He wants us to get centered.
He wants us to get centered. Everybody move down. Wait a minute, let's not trip on the.
It's your last chance to tell Carolyn what to do.
Okay, let's see, let's move on down a little bit. See, right there, is that good? Yep. The water down and, yep. Nope.
There we go. Good, good smile, everybody right there. Can we get City Manager in?
City Manager.
All right, here we go. Good smile. Can we get one more? There you go, good smile.
Helen, the roommate from the hospital? We need you up here. We need you up here.
Everybody get a smile.
Oh gee. This puts us on the agenda at number eight, uh, which is ordinances. We are on the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter 10, amusements and entertainment of the code of ordinances, city of oak park by replacing article six, mechanical amusement devices thereof in its entirety. The ordinance is being repealed as portions of it are preempted by state law and the remainder is outdated and no longer necessary. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you so much. Um, we are now, uh, the city manager portion of.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Why, whose idea is it to make the mayor's term two years, nobody else's four?
That's just.
We've talked about this like privately, I've been asking for like a number of years already, but what's, what's the point? I'm sorry, I know.
I think that, um, if, if the people feel they've made a mistake, they can fix the mistake sooner. Um, city manager Eric Tungay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So first, I, I just have the one, um, order of business, um, and before I get to that, I do want to, on behalf of all of the city staff, take this opportunity to, um, tell Mayor Pro Tem Burns what a privilege it's been, um, to work for her for the last 12-plus years now. I agree, it has seemed like, it doesn't seem possible that it's been that long. Um, but when I think of Carolyn Burns, the first word that comes to mind is, uh, consistency. As the mayor was saying, Mayor Pro Tem Burns is somebody who rain or shine, um, was present and involved, and I will never forget her guidance, um, over some pretty difficult circumstances here at the city over the last several years. Um, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve for you, ma'am, and I just want to thank you so much for that opportunity. And I'm a little bit of the wet blanket here, but I do have to ask for a motion to accept, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Burns resignation effective at the end of this meeting. Councilmember.
So sadly do we have a motion.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Um, all those, do we, just all those in favor?
If we don't approve this, she's stuck here.
Oh, yes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, we're all opposed, actually, but Carolyn Burns would come to a meeting no matter what happened, like the postman, through the deepest snow and through any kind of personal issue. So when she has not been able to come, you know she is just very, very ill. And I know that they're going to fix her up and we are going to have her back. So this is just a do and not goodbye. So that is motion carried.
So councilmembers, um, one more, um, matter of business with, with Mayor Pro Tem's resignation then effective at the end of this meeting. Um, there are some charter mandated courses of action that need to be taken. And, um, I think all of you were, or no, I'm sorry, councilmember whitehead, this is what led to councilmember whitehead's first term on council, but we did have this happen before. Um, our current state representative used to be on the city council and she had to resign to go serve in the state legislature. Um, so we do have a, the framework for a process laid out. Um, the charter does mandate that the council 30 days, um, from now has to make an appointment, um, of a representative to serve the remainder of the term on city council. Um, and the process that we've discussed that would coincide with the process we used, as I mentioned, for Regina Weiss, is that we would post the position, um, on the city website, on our social media channels. Um, obviously, the requirements for the position is that the person must be a resident of the city of oak park for at least one year immediately prior. Um, they must be a qualified and registered voter of the city of oak park, honored before December 31st, 2024. They must be a U.S. citizen, and they must not be in default to the city of oak park or to any other governmental, you know, to the state of Michigan in any manner. That being said, we would put a posting out, and I just handed out a packet, councilmembers, um, that describes the verbiage that we would use in the posting. At the bottom, you'll say, you'll see that it says to apply, click, and there's no link on yours, but there'll be a link that, um, there is a, since the last time we did this, um, we have implemented a, a user interface called applicant pro. Applicant pro is our, um, internal software system that we use to accept resumes for city, uh, jobs. Um, it would be very helpful, in my opinion, in this situation as we could receive applicants. So someone could click on the link that they see on our social media channels or on the city website and be redirected into the applicant pro system. They won't know they're being redirected, but they'll apply through that system. And councilmembers, on page two of the packet that I just handed out to you, you will see applicant pro user instructions. This is, did I not give you one, mayor? I'm sorry.
I'll get it later.
But this is how you will be able to view the applicants and go in and create a username, login credentials, and rate the applicants. Um, and there's step-by-step instructions, and of course, um, the staff and I would be willing to do a tutorial for you, councilmembers, on January 17th, um, in the afternoon, because my recommendation to you, if you accept it, would be that this position will be posted for two weeks, which is exactly what we did last time. So January 17th at noon, we would close the portal to applicants. And then at 2:00 PM on January 17th, we would have our in-person tutorial, councilmembers. You could go in and rate the candidates, and then depending on what you would like us to do, we could select the top three or four of those candidates for in-person interviews to occur on January 27th at a special meeting of council. And of course, that's a public meeting of city council. And then my recommendation would be from there to have a special meeting of council right before our regular meeting of council on February 3rd at 6:00 PM where we would, or where council would make the formal appointment to the city council, and that would fulfill that 30-day window of time. Now, I'll, I'll say one more thing, and then I'll leave it to you, councilmembers, but that is my recommendation. You don't have to accept my recommendation. Um, the charter is moot on any process at all. Council has the authority to do whatever they would like, as long as it is within the 30-day window. But again, the process that I just recommended follows the same process that we did the last time this happened. Um, during the interviews, council also appointed the city manager to ask the questions of the candidates to, uh, maintain, you know, nonpartisan views, of course, in, in asking those questions. So I'd be happy to do that, but myself, the staff are here to support whatever city council decides.
So is there a motion?
So if you do decide to support my recommendation, there, I have, there's a motion, so it would be a motion to approve the resident application process for the city council vacancy created by the resignation of Mayor Pro Tem Carolyn Burns.
So moved.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it, but I'd like to discuss it.
Yes, now it's time for discussion. Councilmember Solomon Radner.
Okay, so July, so July, I wish, January 27th would be the day that we do the interviews, the way it's proposed right now. Um, I'd like to know if you all are okay with conducting the interviews on January 29th, that Wednesday. I'm supposed to be out of town with my son on January 27th, returning on the 28th. So the twen- now, I, I could try to change that, but if the 29th works for you all, I sincerely appreciate it.
Does that work?
Is that a memory ask question?
Yes, please. Uh, councilmember whitehead.
We have a meeting on the 21st of January, don't we? For MLK Day, it's moved to Tuesday. Is that, if we posted it tomorrow, is that two weeks not enough time, or?
You, Madam Mayor, can I?
City manager Eric Tungay.
So councilmember whitehead, you could absolutely, um, um, notwithstanding, you know, people, the applicant's availability and just that short turnaround, you could have the interviews on the 21st if you so chose to. But the issue with that, we thought, was, you know, if it's closing on the 17th, you just have a few days and it's the weekend, basically, and then a holiday, so we didn't want to bunch it up.
Yeah, it's a lie.
Let's see. City council meeting on the 6th.
The 29th works for me.
City council meeting on the 21st, 29th. So the 29th.
29th, does that work for you?
Would be for interviews, and what's the day that we have to come up with the answer?
Uh, so the, the date that we're recommending council select the candidate would be on February 3rd.
On February.
Which is, which coincides with a regular council meeting date.
Now theoretically, if we wanted, we could vote on the 29th, right? That's a meeting.
You, absolutely.
Okay, so the 20, by the 3rd, we have to.
By the 3rd, you, well, that actually will be a little bit shy of 30 days, but yes, but no later than the 30 days, right?
Okay. So I, I don't know if you all, I know some of you, I know, I'm sure the mayor and Carolyn remember this, the last time we had to do this for Sean, and this is kind of a funny story, we had a whole bunch of people interview, and then Sean interviewed, and then it was kind of like everybody just kind of looked around, and we were on Zoom, but everybody kind of looked at each other and was like, that's the guy, right? And then somebody else who had just interviewed jumped back on and unmuted and said, I obviously want the position, but if you don't give it to me, you should give it to Sean.
Yeah, yes.
That's true.
He overwhelmed us, he did.
Journey began.
That's right.
With his competence. May that happen again. So we are okay with the 29th for, uh, interviews, Wednesday, the 29th? Is that what was decided?
What time?
We could do it at 6 o'clock? Is that 6 o'clock? Special meeting at 6 o'clock?
That's fine, okay, thank you all.
Madam Mayor, I just want to just, just recall, the last time we did this, you know, obviously, it was during COVID, so it was on, we did all of this via Zoom. We do not have that at our disposal this time, so these will be in-person.
Alive meeting.
These will be alive meetings, right.
And will we be here or next?
Well, I think we'll be right in council chambers, I would say, for that one.
Okay. Okay, that is settled. And, um, do you have?
So we have a motion, we have a second with.
We had discussion.
Proposed modification, does that work, or do we need a new motion?
So moved.
Okay, we're still good, okay.
January 29th, okay.
So as amended? To, um, uh, interview on the 29th? And to adopt?
February 3rd. Interviews on?
February 3rd would be the day to select candidates. Interviews would be January 29th.
And Wednesday at 6 o'clock.
Closing of applications would be January 17th.
Right, at noon.
At noon. And that would give us, that would give us a number of days to go over the applications before the interviews. And, um, people would have to be selected for the interviews, is there a day for that?
Well, that.
So that they could be notified?
Well, and I think that's just, that's the last part of this, Madam Mayor, that I would ask the council, um, weigh in on, but I, you know, staff and I would need to know, do you want us to pick the top three candidates per the ratings? The top four candidates per the ratings? What if there's a tie between candidate three and candidate four, or others?
Let's make the decision.
But I just wanted to.
About the number.
Right. Just wanted to emphasize, though, if you, once you create your applicant pro interface, you will be able to go in and view the candidates at any time and the ratings at any time. So you'll be able, you can see their resume, their cover letter, um, their qualifications, et cetera, at any time, all remotely.
But you are asking, should the city choose the top candidates based on the ratings?
Right. Yeah.
I think the last time each city council member selected three people to interview.
Right.
And there was a lot of overlap.
Yeah.
And we wound up interviewing six people?
Six people.
Six people.
Can you remember that, yeah?
Out of 24. Out of 24.
I think that's a good system. I think if we each get to pick three, there's probably going to be a lot of overlap again, and then we'll probably end up with...
Six.
Probably six or so.
Six or five, yeah.
I would think.
I would hope.
Madam Mayor, if I could just weigh in on that.
Yes.
So just keep in mind, though, the difference being that you're rating each of the candidates. So your rating is going to flush them up to the top, not whether they're top three or not.
Okay, so our ratings are going to be what drives the top three.
Correct.
Do we have to do a bad access?
No.
We don't.
You do not.
We do not.
You do not.
I think...
Yeah, I kind of like it. Why don't we just do the old system? Everybody just picks three.
Picks three.
Does that work?
The only issue I could see with that is that you're not going to be able to view candidates as they come in. It's going to... Well, because we're going to be receiving applications the old way, which is, we're going to get them... We're not going to be able to give you those candidates' applications until January 17th at noon, when we've closed it and received them all.
As soon as you've got them.
I think that's what it should be.
That's your prerogative.
Yeah, that's the most sense. So January 17th at noon, we get... Everybody gets all the applicants, and then we get to... Each gets to pick three.
Okay.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Julie, you seem unsure.
My opinion doesn't count.
So you're saying that with this system, if we choose the same people...
Right.
They're all going to rise to the top anyway, so... Right?
Possibly.
That's right. And our...
But you're picking them as they come in, and rating them as they come in, right?
No, that's only...
You don't have to. But I'm looking at our HR director as I'm saying this, and she's, you know, we've... You want to come up and speak to this? We've revolutionized the way that the city takes applicants for city jobs. And I think... I do think it's a very good system, but I want her to speak to it.
Like you give someone a top rating, and then you find somebody who's better.
Two days later.
Yeah, two days later.
And you can wait to go on to...
I kind of like the idea of everybody... We all get all the applications at one time.
Together.
And then kind of we reverse it. I kind of like that, for this kind of thing.
So explain.
Eric, the way you hire people is very different than the process we're doing.
No, and that's fair. But I do... Yeah. That's totally fair.
That is correct. The way we hire people is a little bit different. However, the process has made it very simple using Applicant Pro, because what happens is, once you all have rated the candidates, you then select the rating that will sort who you all like the most.
What do you mean, select the rating?
So you click on the ratings. You just click on the rating column, and it will then sort who has the highest ratings. And it will show you what each of you rated that person, right?
But then theoretically... Let's just speak theoretically, because that's what I like to do. If let's say... If let's say Marion and Julie like... dislike the candidate that I like, I may have zero of my candidates. Like, if I look at them and I say, "These two are good." I have... I have zero. Those two, if I give them fives and everybody else gives them ones, they're not going to be at the top.
That's true, but you still have to interview these candidates. Remember, this is just going to select the top ones that you've rated. You still have to interview them. This is just narrowing down how many people you actually interview, because what you don't want is to be there for 10 hours interviewing. If all four of you choose four different people, that's 12 people.
That's not going to happen. I think we should...
We hope that's not going to happen.
I think we should do it this way. Everybody picks three. I pick three, you pick three, you each pick three. We say, "These are my three names." We see how many names there actually are. It's not going to be 12. It never is. We only did this once before. We each got to submit three or four last time.
Three.
Three. And we only ended up with six people that we interviewed, because there was so much overlap. I think there's going to be a lot of overlap again.
You're not saying people apply. You have a couple of new ones, but...
So it seems like Applicant Pro is one way of doing it. This is another way?
Can I weigh in on that? I think you're going to arrive at the same decision, I think. It's just... And I honestly don't think it matters either way.
Now, if you do Applicant Pro, are you stuck with it? It's like...
Not necessarily. I have no issue if we...
So there's no, like, legal thing that the person says, "I was first, and you picked me?"
No.
This is just a way for you to sort who your top candidates are, and then from there, you choose who you want to interview. Even if you had candidates... Let's just say, using Councilman Radner's example, you had a candidate that, let's say, scored a three star, but you still wanted to interview that person. There's nothing prohibiting you from doing that.
Right.
So we can have the best of both, in a way? We can have the best of both.
Correct.
So this is a rating system, and then ultimately, we're going to pick the people anyway.
You're going to interview them anyway.
Yeah, I'm making it so complicated. It's so complicated.
It seems that it's going to be easier for the administration, though, to do the Applicant Pro.
Correct.
So can we do the Applicant Pro and the old-school way for council? Like, where we get the actual emails and hard copies, or could come pick it up?
Absolutely.
And then that way, you guys get it through Applicant Pro, but we get it the old-fashioned way?
Yeah. And then we each have to pick three.
And absolutely, we can do that. And also, just remember, on Applicant Pro, you'll still be able to view their resumes, all the information that you're going to review otherwise. So it's all there.
Send it to us off the Applicant Pro.
We can do that, too.
And you can look at all of them before you rate them?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You'll see all the information.
Because I'm thinking, you give somebody a one, and then somebody's a better one, or...
So, no.
Let's do... So let's agree to do both. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Both?
So just for clarification, you all would like to have the applicants... The application sent to you?
But...
As well?
They apply on Applicant Pro, just like the city. And then we'd also like a hard copy?
Okay. Because when you go in, you're going to see their cover letter and their resume. But I can print them for you.
I suppose during the interviews, I'm a note taker, so I take notes on the hard copy.
Yep.
We'll do both, Madam Mayor.
We can do that.
Okay, I mean, come on, though.
This is a generational thing. Some people print things out, and some people don't.
We're good.
Oh, it's not a problem. We can definitely do both.
So we will do Applicant Pro, and we'll also get hard copies, and we'll do it the old-school way and the new-school way. And we are ready to vote, then? Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of council, I just want to say one more thing before I turn it back over for the city manager report. I'd like to say Happy New Year to everybody, and I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to acknowledge that the Lions are the kings of the north.
Yes. A friend of mine had a little baby a couple of years ago, and he bought him a Lions onesie. And he put on Facebook, "I'm setting him up for a lifetime of disappointment." Right? So... And then the Lions turn around, and none of the comedians can use their old Lions jokes anymore, because they're fabulous. And what is it? Amen Ray?
St. Brown.
Instead of dancing in the end zone, stood on his head with his hands on his side, and a bakery baked a cake of him on his head with his arms at his side. I mean, we have got a happy Detroit area, people. That is so dear.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Call to the audience. Is anyone here? Would you like to read the... Yes, please.
Could this be my final time?
That's right. Well, temporarily final.
Call to the audience. Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Oak Park does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a city council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal attacks on persons or institutions. Also, there is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Thank you. And anybody in the audience have an issue or something that they would like to talk about?
Just want to make an announcement.
For anybody that want to wish well, now's your chance.
A Happy New Year to everybody. Everybody. Call to the council. Bernie White, I think you have a couple pictures for me. I know the... Our city manager is... Oh, wait a minute. Is famous for another reason. Crane's Magazine published a whole article that Eric Tungay wrote about the future of transit in the city, and how we need to come together and cooperate, and not make it a political issue. It's not a political issue. It is an economic development issue that we need in order to have the city grow to the next level. So we have a famous city manager. Thank you. And the other thing is, we have... We've had a lot of ribbon cuttings in the city of Oak Park, a lot of new businesses. And here is the owner of one of the newest. This is Molly Evans, who is a nurse, and their youngest child is a special needs child. And they found that there was no solution for getting some of the activities that they needed for her. And so they solved this problem for themselves and for other families with similar needs by opening Oakland Kids Rehabilitation at 25595 Coolidge, north of 696. It gives the kids an opportunity to dance, sing, and move, at the same time getting speech therapy, occupational therapy, and play group. So that was a wonderful, wonderful event, and ribbon cutting, and we welcome them to the city of Oak Park. We're delighted to have them as well. They put on an amazing spread, if you stopped by. That was it. And thank you, and thank you for coming, and such nice numbers to... For our beloved Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem, do you want another couple words?
No. I'll be crying all over again.
You're crying again. Okay.
But thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Yeah. Councilmember Solomon Radner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you all for coming out to honor our esteemed Mayor Pro Tem, somebody I had the privilege of serving with for about nine years. Some of you may know this, some of you may not. I actually joined Carolyn's campaign when she first announced that she was running for city council, and I was knocking on doors with her and making phone calls with her. And it's been... It's been an absolute honor and a privilege to serve alongside her. Like she said, we call each other brother and sister, and I'm going to miss you tremendously. It's been an absolute honor working with you and serving with you. Wish you well, and hopefully, maybe if you feel well enough, you can submit an application and try and take your seat.
I think you'd get ones. I'm not sure. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Thank you all for coming out. Although it's a kind of a sad occasion, I'm sorry that Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Burns is leaving us. I know that it's been a tough road lately, and we are here for you. You know that. And it's been a privilege to serve with you as well. And Happy New Year, everybody.
Amen. Councilmember Whitehead has also had challenges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's been a little bit of a sad couple of weeks. But Mayor Pro Tem, I want to keep the shine on you today. And you've been a great mentor, advisor. One thing about Mayor Pro Tem is, she always did her homework. She always did her homework, and she taught me that from day one. How do I know that? Well, I know that because one of the questions she asked me during an interview, when I was first going for the seat, she said, "I was so nervous. I had practiced for like a week straight with my mentors for the application process, and I was probably over-prepared." And I forgot one of the main points that I wanted to make during the interview, which was that I was helping out youth with a program called the Legislative Bootcamps. And it was on my resume that I was teaching youth how to write their own legislation and law, so hopefully, one day, they could be a lawyer, be a lawmaker. And I had that on my resume, but I forgot to bring it up, and all the different things I was talking about during the interview. And Councilwoman Burns, she turned in the middle of the meeting and said, "You do something with kids, though, don't you?" And then it just... It let my whole shoulders go back, like, "Yeah, I do. I do do things with the youth, and I do want to help this be the family city again." And then I got it to able to go into that part of it. And I just always thanked her for how she opened up that door for me, even with that one little reminder or something that I had forgot when I thought I was so polished on my preparations. And she caught that on my resume, and she brought it up. She said, "Well, you got on here. You do something with kids, don't you? Won't you tell us about that?" And that's just always how she's been, and I just... I can't thank her enough. I'm going to do everything I can to keep honoring her on Juneteenth. My initial thought of hearing this news is, I want to name a scholarship after her, because that's just, you know, the type of service she's done. City clerk and historians may have to check this, but I believe that she holds the highest position ever for a black woman in this city of Oak Park. So...
Oh, yeah.
So... As Mayor said, I've been going through some things. We'll talk about that another time. But I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Prayers for your family, for healing, and hope, and strength. Thank you.
Sean, I just want to say thank you for opening my eyes more and making me curious about Juneteenth, and getting involved, and I will always be available to help you with that.
And if I could just say one more thing, I'm sorry, 'cause I could keep going on about her, but she, she pushed for this city to get bathrooms, and are out there for so long. And not only do we got bathrooms, we got fifty percent of the parks getting redone. I mean, I mean, it's a beautiful thing, and that's all 'cause of her, her labor. With bathrooms, with bathrooms, so we got twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five equipment coming in on linear parks and all that, and that is thanks to, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Burns and her efforts under the mayor and city manager.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes.
Did you want us to name the restrooms after you? No? It's going too far?
The scholarship for the restrooms.
I think the scholarships might be a better thought, yeah. But she did lobby really strong for years. When are we going to improve those?
Every budget meeting, I was on them about it.
Yes, yes.
Because the residents of Oak Park are great. We are one of the few cities that have a remaining swimming pool and a, and a good park for our families to enjoy. And as much as traffic and usage as those parks received, they needed to be upgraded. So I apologize now because I was really not a good member when it came to the bathrooms.
She was a great member. She was a lobbyist for the, for clean, new bathrooms. And when we go to that park, we will quietly say thank you to her. Thank you. This has just been a joyful meeting. There being no further business to come before? Yeah, oh, we can't, we've got a, um, we are adjourning. We have a closed session. So we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
And, um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Redner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We will adjourn. Don't stay, there's nothing exciting that happens at the end. The, the lawyer will tell us information about cases.
Somehow, oh, somehow we have to get Carolyn's plaques into work. Maybe someone who's not gonna be at the meeting, I think. Oops.
Another Republican, mega-Republican. Okay, we need a motion to accept the minutes of the closed session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We need a motion to accept the recommendation of our city attorney to enter into consent judgment on the eight-mile LLC litigation.
Second.
Second. Do we need a roll call for that one?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. There, we are adjourned.